Okay, welcome everyone to our Battle City Council meeting on Tuesday, April fourteenth, twenty twenty. I'm Keith Bradshaw and I am the mayor of Portent tonight. Our mayor, Matt Lewis, is joining us online. And so he is dialing in, but I think it may be a little hard for him to conduct the meeting while being online. So he's with us and we'll be able to chime in, but I'll be conducting. So the first thing we need to do is we have asked John Eggett if he can lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you mind giving that for us, John?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the great energy of this world.
I think everyone's got one.
Thank you so much, John. Thank you, thank you. That was so kind.
Actually, we can say all right. And now we're going to have a thought or a prayer and a council meeting. Please do that for us.
Well, thank you very much. Thanks for the chance we had to meet as a city council tonight. Grateful for the city that we live in. Grateful for the kindness that has been shown to us as we have experienced lower than expected rates of disease and death in our community. We ask the blessings to be able to reach out from a safe distance to those around us and help lift each other up, take care of our neighbors, make sure that everyone has the things that they need. Father, we ask the blessings that we'll be able to be mindful, come forward with always those around us and be able to provide meaningful service to them, however small. We're grateful for the blessings that we enjoy living in this free country, living in this blessed community. And we ask the blessings all over the world apart to make good, keep it great. Can you say these things in the name of Jesus Christ?
Amen.
Amen.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes for meetings on March seventeenth and budget committee meetings on April sixth.
Madam Proton, Mayor Proton, I would like to motion in the second.
Do you motion and we have a second. All in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passage unanimously. Our next item is council report. And perhaps we could start on this end.
I would just like to make one, Jack's report, and that is we have set August the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth for the Battle City Council's car show. Also, on the twenty-ninth will be the last concert of our country in the summer, which is the fifties and sixties century bands. We have moved the car show from June to August.
I have a lot of things to report, but I would do one thing, John, again, for these clocks. What a kind gift, and I understand you're a veteran. And thank you so much for all the service that you've given to our council report and the report and the things to report.
Not necessarily report, but plead to go out if anybody is out there watching this meeting. And that is go get tested for coronavirus, because right now the government has no basis on which to reopen our society, because no one's going to get tested. So if you're out there, anyone, please, if you have any one of the symptoms, they're begging for people to come and get tested. Maybe if we get some good results back, the government that was so quick to shut everything down will have the courage to open that hell. Thank you. At the University of Utah Hospital, or at Quinn. As long as you have at least one symptom of coronavirus.
And Mr. Mayor, do you have any reports you want to give us? I'm not sure if we can hear. Maybe people are... Randy, I think you're unmuted. Which, if you're listening online, that is probably a bingo swear for you.
I'm unmuted, yes. Please, please report on that. And I, I did, I did zoom in to the Utah League of Cities and Towns meeting with Lieutenant Governor Cox today. So, yeah, any, anything you want to report on that, Kate, and any other things? That's great.
Okay. For my council report, so you know, I serve on Lakeview Hospital's board, and they had asked me to serve on their crisis care committee for the coronavirus response. We had a crisis care committee meeting this morning. And what I was happy to report is that the hospitals were well-prepared should they need it. They have reports from the head pharmacy, they have a lady there, they have good supply testing swabs, they have a great supply of PPE, and they have a plan set up so that they can safely treat anyone that has the virus. And they successfully segregated the hospitals so that if you have some type of other need, if you find that you've got an emergency of sinusitis or bronchitis, they can safely treat you for those other things as well, as well as any, you know, expected others. So it was a hopeful meeting, and it felt good to know that we are prepared, that they not highly have to see how other states and other counties are reacting. We have this great time to prepare and be ready, and we should consider about what we've got in terms of resources and that. Much more important. All right, moving on to consideration of approval of expenditures for a greater than a thousand dollars for March ninth, sixteen, twenty-third, and thirty-eighth, and February financial report. It appears since we're only in meeting, I should announce this for all of our listening audience. So whether it'll be one time a month, or if we have more expenditures, you know, one month meeting, that'd be normal. So with that, does everyone have an opportunity to review those expenditures? Any questions?
And Proton, I'd like to make a motion that we approve expenditures greater than a thousand dollars for March ninth, sixteen, twenty-third, or twenty-twenty, as well as February twenty twenty financial report.
Motion in the second. Any further discussion? Aye. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passage unanimously. All right, we will move on to item number five, consideration of approval for a crime machine proposal for rebuilding the three turbines, this is the Echo Reservoir. And Gary, I believe from you, will you present any elements?
I will, thanks.
Okay, so what will you tell me?
So this is very near to completion of the rebuild of the hydro electric units at the Echo Reservoir generation plant. And this is a contract that draws very near completion. In fact, the rebuild is done, they're painting. By next week, we should be getting power back through this hospital curricula, we'll be getting power from the hydro electric units at Echo. This is for four hundred and seventy-five thousand three hundred and two dollars. It will come out of retained earnings. The total project cost to repair our three turbines is one point two two seven million dollars. We estimate, I think at the beginning of this process, that it would be between one and three million dollars. So five and two million dollars, so happy with where this is coming in all in essence. But that is just, I'm happy to answer questions.
Any questions?
Comment if I could, Mayor Proton. The power department was able to, we have new turbines coming from China, and not in time for this generation here. So the power department arranged with crime machine to refurbish at least one, was one of those turbines here that we had that was damaged. And so we will have generation from all of the available turbines once the, once the project is completed this week. And that will be a huge financial benefit as we can generate power for the spring. So we do have another turbine that will be coming still from China, I believe it's just one. And it'll be installed after this generation here when our plant reacts now. But for now, we have full generation for the summer.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Do you have to make a motion?
I do have to make a motion that we approve these expenditures as listed up there.
Second. Now, multiple seconds. So with that, all for both, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passage unanimously. Moving on to item six, consideration of approval of the purchase of thirty-three transformers. And I believe Gary will continue the role of Alan Johnson, minus the platform.
Exactly. Although I have a platform, it's a period of time. This is a regularly stable replacement of inventory for our transformers. We'll overhead and add now transformers. We have received two bids from distributors, and based on total cost of transformers, we're recommending that the, literally purchased, be made by Anixor Power Solutions for seventy-eight thousand five hundred and thirty-five.
Do you have any questions or comments? I have one question for you. In our part progress, we discussed the transformer being part of this, are any of the transformers considered here? One of those, that is separate?
No, I don't know specifically, but what we do have, from what I've exchanged, that is the kind of transformers we keep. What we do have on hand, whether or not it's in this batch or mine, it's not something we have a order special for the previous part.
That was my question. Thank you. And no further questions? We look for a motion.
I have to make a motion that we make the purchase from Anixor Power Solutions for seventy thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars for these top transformers. As noted. A second?
A second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passage unanimously. We'll move on to item seven, consideration of approval of the MICH Steelworks bid for seven steel poles. With Gary will continue to play the role of Alan Johnson.
So last year, the council budgeted a capital improvement project, which looks speed or five seventy-five on third one south, between Fort Worth Drive and Fort Worth East on the south end of town. This purchases for seven steel poles that will be part of the project, which is actually thirty new poles total. We received several bids and recommend purchasing the seven pole twenty-four inch poles from MICH Steelworks in the amount of one hundred and sixty-nine thousand sixty dollars.
Any questions or comments?
Let's move on this item with like quickly, is that MICH Steelworks is the only company that can be our department's twenty-four inch request in diameter on poles to provide better visibility and less footprint on that narrow street front. So. So there's only one bid on that side.
And I see that you approved this.
Second. A motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passage unanimously. We are moving on now to item number eight, approval of the consideration of approval of the Americom Technology bid for directional boring with Gary Johnson, or Gary will continue to play the role of Alan Johnson. I really wish you could pluck off.
Well, those days are gone. But thank you. So we have several underdrives distribution circuits and streetlight circuits in the city. Council mayor member, the utility there is putting in place a couple years ago, since we began, we replace our streetlights. In addition to that, we have a number of other circuits, and we are providing alternate circuits, alternative circuits to help improve the redundancy of our system. The directional boring is a big part of that program that allows us to more economically replace those, those circuits without having to trench. We've had a number of these in the past. This particular project, we received bids from three different companies, and we're recommending that the council accept. The bid given was by Americom Technology Incorporated. We've had them already, in the amount of two hundred and sixty-one thousand seventy-seven dollars.
Any comments or questions?
Only that Kendall and Taus almost made it to prime time on the first of the beautiful color photos.
Oh, so close. And I wish there was some joke about boring.
Yes.
But other than that, I will be happy to make a motion if we accept this bid from your...
Second.
A motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, moving on into what is perhaps his final goal, according to Mr. Alan Johnson, a consideration of the civic core invoice for the one thirty-eight substation upgrade.
Thank you. The council mayor member that we recently completed the rebuild of our one thirty-eight substation. The last, we knock on wood, but we believe the last component that is paying time and material cost for two civic core. They have a certain amount of inspections that they need to do, as well as being on-site on certain functions. The amount of reimbursement due to that is thirty-one thousand two hundred and five dollars and fifteen cents. We recommend the council approve that spending.
Do you remember where the substation one thirty is? There we have something that I shared a lot with.
So this is the substation that's west of Centerville, west of the legacy highway. It is our major, it's our major substation in the city. We share, and we do share a path with civic core out there.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? If not, everyone can entertain a motion.
Mayor Proton elected to improve the city core invoice for the one hundred and thirty-eight substation upgrade in the amount of thirty-one thousand two hundred and five dollars and fifteen cents. Second.
A motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passage unanimously. Moving onward to item number ten, consideration of approval of precision concrete total trip hazard maintenance.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Good evening, members of the council. For the last twenty years, the city has employed precision concrete cutting to go around town, cut the trip hazards that are on the sidewalks. We proposed last year. We prepared a new proposal that gave an opportunity for other contractors to bid on this spec. As you can see, we had few responses. It's a pretty limited scope of work to be able to perform that kind of stuff. As part of our evaluation, we evaluated what actually happens in the rain. And a little bit of a ridge rock as we took a look at it. They're performing work that we're excited that it wasn't really in our specifications. So tonight, we come to you asking for approval for a contract with precision concrete cutting to complete this course around town. It's very cost effective. It's much cheaper than replacement, although replacement does happen eventually in these locations. But we're here to cover a large percentage of the city, and we're using cities money for these trip hazards. Street partners included eighty thousand dollar budget, and that's basically how we replace with the... You have to answer questions.
What was this about red rocks that you're running around?
The specification is that surface be smooth and uniform. It also has a slope component. Ridge rocks were very, very rough. It was like it had a lot of ridges. It was a real rear. It was not ground up, so if it was not uniform, the slopes did not meet the requirements of the ADA. And that's the ultimate requirement. Is the least trip hazards that we cut down, they have to meet that one inch of slope.
Were they grinding rather than cutting? It were. Just as a note, that typically produces a lot more notches, dust from makers. If you're grinding that amount of concrete rather than just cutting, so. Anyway.
What was the disqualifying factor for the Ian, if you want?
It's pretty long after submitting his original bid and receiving a bid negotiation, contacted our office and suggested that he might submit alternate pricing. I informed him that it was the negotiation in this form today. I was going to disqualify.
Any further questions to come to?
We have a question. Have we ever been sued? Someone tripping on the inside of our head? Clint?
We've never been sued since I've been here. We have received claims.
Go ahead and delete the wrong question.
No, no.
Thank you. We have answered from our city attorney. Any other questions or comments? If not, we have to make a motion on the side of him. I'd like to motion that the approved precision concrete proposal for trip hazard maintenance, in the amount said, eighty thousand dollars. Excuse me? Yes.
Second.
A motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passage unanimously. Moving on to item eleven, consideration of the approval of the line twenty-nine car engine proposal for architectural services for the street department car wash. Mr. Chaney, back to you.
Thank you. The street department budget includes a capital project in the upcoming fiscal year for replacing a fifty-year-old building in the street department. It's mainly a storage building, but it does have a wash pit component to it. It's a bedroom block and a concrete frame building, but it's in very, very poor condition. The city manager would probably attest he saw some falling parts on the recent inspection that we had. It's, it's really in bad shape. And so the engineering departments put together an RFP for architectural services so that we can recite that. We did receive six proposals from architects, some of them very familiar to us, including one of those JRCAs who's our architectural state hall. The proposals were varied in their pricing. And usually, the expectation for these proposals is that they are kind of bid on a percentage base. It's on construction level. We didn't receive lump sum bids. We also didn't receive percentage type proposals. Those were pretty low service, some of those there in the middle. Line twenty-nine architecture did propose a flat fee of sixty-eight thousand dollars. You must see the care it's designed with for significantly more expensive than that. Line twenty-nine is not the company that we have dealt with. So we've taken time to contact their references and found that we have the capability to perform on this project. This is really a very simple building. In fact, I mean, markets are about who their sub consultants are for structural, electrical, mechanical, and then about the actual architecture of the building. Since we have a fine example, immediate use that will intend match, we don't want to create something too far out down there. We think that sixty-eight thousand dollars is a fair fee for that. Discussing this line twenty-nine architecture, they're more than comfortable in completing the project for that price. We're going to be, as we initially designed this building, there's going to be some surprises. Can you guarantee that? Our past experience of building buildings on that site showed that the slopes are bad, and we'll need to do a little more investigative work to make sure we quantify that appropriately in the design. We're going to give the recommendation of the approval of line twenty-nine's proposal. And then, yeah, that's your questions.
Does line twenty-nine have any significance in the engineering or architectural world?
It does not.
Second.
Any other questions?
I have to make a motion that we approve the contract of line twenty-nine architecture for a total of sixty-eight thousand dollars for work on the storage and washing.
A motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passage unanimously. Moving on to item number thirteen, consideration of approval of the preliminary site plan for our mixed-use development located at two twenty north Main Street. And for this, we will move to Mr. Francisco.
Is there one?
There's one on the left. My apologies, Francisco, sorry. We are going to go to the consideration of approval of the JMR construction proposal for the twenty-twenty pump three replacement projects. I got too excited to ask.
Thank you. Every year, well, almost every year, we prepare big documents for proper replacement projects around town. This contract, for councilmen's, for us benefit, this work is in conjunction with nearly every department in the city who does work in the, around the city. Whether curb, gutter, sidewalk, driver approaches that get damaged, or completely removed in the course of that work, the engineering department inherits this contract to make those repairs as we do utility work. Complete the mission of the city departments. This year, as we prepared those documents, we only received three proposals, and see there's quite a disparity between the high and the low. That's... What's not surprising about that is who the little bit here is. Tonight, we're introduced to John Eggett. John is the J, JMR. He's in line. He's currently running JMR, but the city's very familiar with JMR construction. They've had this contract for many, many years. I can see that my staff was absolutely thrilled that they were willing to, the opportunity we had to work with them once again. What's significant about this contract is that we bid on a unit price basis. We have a list of approximately fifty items to be included in this contract. That allows us to complete many of the common types of work that we encounter with utility work or other repairs throughout the city. These items are not really tied to any specific budget, because the repairs are bid to the utility department, so we leave to the departments to track their total expenses. We, my department does assist in the bidding and accounting side of that, because we heard that. Those work orders are quarterly. I didn't know that could give you any better recommendation for JMR. And then they pad it with repairs. I think they were very minimal. Best of all, we're bad. So it's nice to spend a few dollars here, here in town.
I started this company in nineteen sixty. I worked for fifty years when I turned up for my son. We never had anything like new losses.
For those of you that are in the audience, what you, what you missed was Mr. Eggett giving us just a little bit of the fifty-year history of this company and its private ownership and the work that he carries. And so we're excited to have this proposal for. So with that, any questions from the council?
I have a question. As I notice the engineering estimates, I went down and proved this. There's such disparity between the engineering departments' complete view and the side letters. To me shows, you know, how would I put it? Gouging. I'm very, very impressed with JMR, JMR, their willingness to work with the city and understand what's going on in the city. I was very disappointed with the tax bid. I thought it was way outside and entering to be considered. It's not uncommon right now. Or keeping those really cheap or really expensive. Look, it's, I like the idea of using people we know. It gets very important. New people we know can track with this. New people we know can track with this. Thank you, thank you. Mr. Mr.?
Any further questions?
I have a question. Is this, oh, never mind. I answered my other question. All right.
I think, I think I was hearing an imminent motion coming from the council's essence. So let's
Thank you, madam, you're welcome. I would like to make a motion that we need to step foot there uh, from, uh, that's on the right page. From JMR Construction Proposal for the twenty-twenty concrete replacement car wash.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Passes unanimously.
This one's good.
Shouldn't dispose that about.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we will, we will move over to item fourteen that I was so excited to get to. Sorry, item fourteen that I was so excited to get to for the, um, consideration preliminary site plan for property development located at two-twenty North Main Street. Mr. Scott.
Thank you. So we're looking at a site at two-twenty North Main Street. We're in the downtown district. This is the Brooks fabric site. Those buildings are, uh, come down and, uh, uh, the residential component of this application goes for a conditional use program that held back compared altogether with the final site plan approval with, uh, that goes with that planning commission. Uh, this site has seen to variance, displaced vehicles along the front. Uh, uh, along the front, yard setback area. Uh, with the condition that they built a wall and that rendering is shown on page ninety-one of your packets. Um, if you want to flip back between the site plan on page seventy and ninety-one, that, uh, will increase, uh, levels. Uh, there, uh, this site consists of three parcels. There, it's elevated into one. Uh, this, uh, the planning commission reviewed it last week on April seventh and forwarded a possible recommendation. Uh, it was a seven-hour recommendation with the staff conditions, with the conditions gathered by staff. Uh, going back to page seventy, we, we're looking at five bigger bits. Uh, the two purple ones on page seventy, those are the mixing buildings with, uh, office uh, along the main level and then two upper levels of residential. And then we have two other buildings along two hundred north. Those are residential units and then we have another building, three more residential units. Also, it's the interior layout towards the north of the site. Uh, total, we have, uh, thirty-one residential units, two studios, eight one bedrooms, two two-bedroom apartments, and then nine townhouses. The commercial component is about twenty-four hundred square feet of, uh, office space. Um, as part of this application, they are requesting to close the Main Street access points and have one access point for the entire, uh, internal layout of the site, uh, from two hundred north. All buildings are going to be, uh, are going to be three-story buildings. And, um, we're, uh, we're very well placed with the, uh, current articulation and architectural detailing. If you go back through that lovely rendering on the very ground on page ninety-one, uh, where it did that combination of horizontal and vertical articulation, which, uh, I think may have been one of my first planning commission meetings. One of my first meetings back in July. Richard will remember. He was on that planning commission. And, uh, that was the heavy advice that the commission gave on just to go vertical. And they did and have the entire project just restored. And, uh, we still have some issues that we need to work out with the final site plan approval, uh, consisting, uh, basically of a parking where in the downtown district, uh, it does allow for mixed-use developments to, uh, have the applicants submit, consult with the traffic engineer and come up with a parking analysis. And they've done that. Uh, the current requirement is fifty-five parking spaces. The applicant originally placed forty-two spaces on their site. And, uh, we questioned, uh, the planning commission. The staff questioned three parking spaces. Uh, if you go by her now from page ninety, we've got a, uh, a, the site line which each red dot represents a parking spot. And then we've got a quick rate board in each building. The, the parking study that was, uh, provided to staff was vetted by staff and I also often have, uh, transportation meeting on that, uh, my planning commission. So we're grateful for that, uh, skill. The parking analysis indicated that they needed approximately twenty to thirty-five parking spaces based on, uh, the latest recommendations from the Institute of Transportation Engineers. Um, so they are able to ask to the land authority per the card code to reduce the parking standard. Uh, again, your aggression would be from fifty-five to forty-two. But for that, we've added a condition of approval. It's a staff added condition indicating that we want to see the management plan. Uh, as, uh, they've got the numbers, again, I'm going to focus on page ninety. We want to know, we want to simply know of that red parking spot, who will be parking on it? Just so we could make sure that it's convenient for everyone, make sure that, uh, it, it works, uh, for the development on this internal circulation. Um, the planning commission did forward a recommendation by removing, uh, the parking spaces on two hundred north along the southeast corner. They, the commission did not feel that that was necessary as that would alleviate, um, some of the landscape constraints that the site has. Um, as I need to point out, the site is extremely complicated as it has parking creek running literally through it over. Uh, the site does have a twenty-seven-foot county easement where, uh, the applicant has had many conversations made to the county where they are paying. The applicant placed landscape being in, uh, parking, but they cannot put any buildings on, uh, the actual easement. Due to its proximity, obviously, to water, uh, there are issues with the flood zone that approaches onto the property affecting three buildings. And, uh, the applicant would be required to take months then to sort of ladder, uh, map, uh, revising that, that flood zone to see, uh, um, the applicant has indicated to us that they had a many discussions with the county and that they're comfortable moving forward as is. This is a preliminary site plan review, so it's not final. We need to go back to, uh, planning commission to come back to you for that final approval. And we would like you to, uh, ask any questions. The applicant is here, Justin Atwater. If you have any questions for him. But I will be more than happy to answer any questions. The, uh, planning commission, they forward a possible recommendation. The conditions of approval, of approval are listed on page sixty-six of the document today.
I have a question for you, Francisco. Um, have these parking spots right here on, that look like they enter and exit off two hundred north? Between the, the two-three, uh, unit buildings?
Right.
How do you access those spots? Do they not exit on the two hundred north or are they, are you double stacking the cars?
No, they, they're, well, they look at the double stack, but they're not, they're not, there's a little wall separating them horizontally. It's about eighteen inches. So the two ones from the north are accessed through that driveway and then the two ones from, uh, the south are accessed from, um, two hundred north.
So, so someone that parked there, would they need to reverse out onto two hundred north?
Correct. That would be, um, two parking spaces that would necessitate backing onto two hundred north.
And that's how the other spaces that are close to parking creek that you're proposing? Doing away with it, those also would have been pulled in and back down.
Correct. And, and the reason that the commission felt comfortable removing the three was based on the location as they're, they're farther south from any other neighborhood. And based on the, uh, recommendation from the transportation engineer, it was indicated that they really didn't need those spaces. But we do want to make sure that, that we say, you know, where each dock it, it's supposed to accommodate which specific unit or apartment. We want to double check that.
Any additional questions?
Yeah, the, uh, thank you for that. I read like removing those three stuffs. Did you say the vote of the planning commission was unanimous?
It was.
Um, did the planning commission discuss at all the potential for articulation on the east side of the east building? And there's to the residential neighborhood of the license. Or maybe is there articulation on the south side of the corner building? That might be, uh, it just seems like those are very visible places. It might be an attempt to put some.
Yeah, let me get there real quick. East side of this building.
Are you sure I'm looking at the same side? Do you mean that where, where those three parking spots being on the back side?
That is, that's correct.
So you're looking specifically at the third page. I guess seventy-four, you're looking at that, uh, section of elevation level zero four, right?
Correct.
The, the commission, uh, did not spend much time looking at that specific elevation, but we can certainly pay more attention to that by, uh, I think it should be mitigated by adding penetration, uh, windows, doors.
I think so too. That's just a pretty cold wall that'd be facing the neighborhood. So I don't know if it's appropriate for us to just make that request of you or?
It is, it is completely appropriate as you're at the land authority and the site land review. The actual name on the code is actually architectural and site land review. Also, it's completely up to us to be discussing this at this time.
And we want to compliment the, uh, the project folks. I don't know how to praise that. Whoever the heck did this work. I want to compliment them on the vast improvements this project over the last time. I know it was the early iteration as well, but, uh, it was, I really liked the, uh, the look of this better than I would.
And I also want to say that I appreciate that the vulnerable city process as we take the preliminary architectural review formal in our session to provide feedback to the applicant and direction to move forward to come back with a better product. And that's what we, we give the planning commission as we did spend a significant amount of time, uh, talking about the parking a week ago, as well as, um, the applicant being, uh, able to work with us on that direction you see, uh, from back in July or there. And also, uh, through many internal meetings that we've had, uh, from staff and from the applicant.
Was the variance granted just a week ago?
No. The variance was granted, allowed back, um, but I think perhaps this is on the staff report today, but it was at least four against September. Is that what I'm watching?
So that's the one where I voted against it because I said it was something opposed. I don't believe Sean Watson did it the same time. I'm just trying to revisit painful memories during the years.
Well, we are very, we are at least, uh, going back to anyone as the aesthetic component in the commander boxes, uh, that we'd be, uh, get out of this wall, uh, and I was obviously part of the variance.
Yeah, I think it looks great. Thank you.
What was the other building you could?
The corner building. It looks like that. I saw a different view, the south side of the corner building. I didn't see the, uh, the articulation on it when I first looked at these, the perspective view.
So that this, the side that would, uh, be on two hundred north and Main Street?
Exactly. Basic side.
So that's not really a good way to look at it.
We're not talking about the elevation that joins this parking lot.
Correct.
Correct? We're talking about.
Richard. Talking about this one now, right?
That's right. That, that's south facing corner.
So what page do you want? When you, when you find it and all that you, uh, hear me in it?
Just because we, we've got a parking lot to the south of there and a street that gives all sorts of, uh, view of that south side of the building. So it would just be nicer if it could look as nice as possible. What's the rest of it? What about the other street facing views on it?
I believe it really had to be seventy-two, D-dos zero five, uh, on that, on that image one.
So the top biggest picture on that page?
Yeah, exactly. I don't know where we add that series and, uh, two, three windows and then a door. We could add more articulation by, uh, adding another window, even though the area, everything like that is, is too large. It, it can work out.
Yeah, it just, it seemed a little bit blank. So anyway, if it's not a project killer, I would recommend that we ask the developer to include additional penetration or articulation on that side.
And, and that south elevation is one on the bottoms, because it was E-o-two, right? The, 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 the north one is the one from the internal parking lot, which is E-zero-four.
I was backwards. I'd just like to retract everything I just said. Because that looks great. I'm sorry. I was looking for my.
That's okay.
I thought it was a single door and the two windows.
So it would be, which one would be the one that they think? O-two.
Yeah, O-two. That's, that's.
However, we do recognize that elevation, uh, the east elevation, uh, on page seventy-four, uh, for people walking and driving on two hundred north and west could use some more articulation.
That's image zero four, correct?
That's the zero four on page seventy-four.
Any additional, uh, comments or questions?
We just have one hundred and that is, um, I don't know what, how I would distinguish, especially with the disease, the virus that will not be banned, but I think, um, it'd be really cool if we did honor Brooks, the business owners. Similar to when we had Greg Skedros come and we just honored him, making it for his downfall. I know Brooks' products are very harmful and dangerous. So I think it would be nice to give them a certificate, thanking them for their.
Yeah, I think we can work with them and I think the applicant, uh, the, the lead company owner can work with them too as, uh, they spent a significant amount of time with them. Uh, I think even as of last week, they were, uh, Justin spent a significant time, uh, of time just hanging out and talking to them and, uh, go, going over the vision and everything like that and that. I think we could work something.
Yeah, well, you're talking about maybe having just a name for it.
Yes.
But not, not related to the site.
I, I would say you can name a building after that.
Well, you can definitely watch that. I would just like to recognize some of the.
We, we can set that.
Any additional comments or questions on this? All right, this seems like it would be time for a motion.
I motion that we approve the preliminary site plan for mixed-use development located at two-twenty north Main Street.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Passes. All right, we are on to item number fourteen. Consideration of the approval of preliminary and final site plan for the proposed pretty big brands office at two-sixty north five hundred west. Back to you, Mr. Scott.
Thank you. This is the, uh, desert, the desert, yeah, desert for the great union, uh, relocating, uh, to, uh, two-sixty north five hundred west in the CH. That's commercial heavy district. Uh, the building's about forty-one hundred square feet. They will replace the existing building there. They've got a sign that says pretty yard art and crystal pools and spas. I don't think, and, and the crystal pools and spas businesses there. They have some cabinry, uh, used of some sort. So those, uh, over buildings are coming down and this great building, we are very well pleased with architecture, especially what's located in this part of town. Um, that's why, uh, we moved forward as their application was very thoroughly submitted, everything by our preliminary final site plan. I planned the commission. Last week, we had a heavy discussion on trees, on street trees. Uh, they had, uh, requested one tree along the front edge. We, we did the requirement. They're supposed to provide four. It was either Monday or Thursday where they already sent me a revised landscaping plan that shows four trees on that front side. So even though we had a conditional approval on this application, uh, there is number five. I think this is how we were met as they've got those street trees. Um, the planning commission ended, told it a possible recommendation to approve a preliminary final architectural site plan. The renderings, um, look great and we think that this is going to, um, it's going to lit the, uh, the neighborhood as they've got a very nice landscaping plan uh, with other tree shrubs and other types of, uh, floor, not floor, but ground treatment out here and there. Uh, that is all I have. Um, so we do recommend. So we do recommend that we approve the preliminary final architecture site plan. The vacant owner and the architect will be here to answer any questions.
Any comments or questions from the council?
Someone would like to ask the question, what is the main reason? Because you were currently on main street, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
So what, what are the main reasons?
If you wouldn't mind if you could come up to the podium, actually on the microphone. If you wouldn't mind just giving us your name for all of our audience online.
Okay, my name is Spencer Park, I'm with the desert first grade union.
So we're really excited. It's a great project. I can imagine, really, like Francis said, I'm actually going to look this west. I'm really excited about that. I have a little stat that's giving me news, so maybe you can tell us why.
Yeah, the building there, Main Street is quite old, and so we looked at various options to fix up that building and to make it work. And it was more financially viable for us than most of the buildings in those, remodel.
You have a system that you. I'm saying what you find for your.
For cutting something.
Any additional questions you found?
Was there any other thing that pointed to the decision of something on Main Street? Was that a part of the building?
Yeah, that was, that was, it was a feeling. You feel like also there was a little more capability on that, or what? The main reason.
All right, is there any further questions or comments from the council?
It looks great, and thanks for doing this.
Yeah, it'd be a beautiful problem. Once we're right there next to Mathis Farm, just to put traffic out of Mathis Farm.
I've heard you're speaking on Mathis, but not Mathis. Keeping business accountable. Okay, we are now looking for a motion.
Madam Mayor, Coaten, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the preliminary and final site plan. For the proposed credit union branch office located at 260 Oriole, 500 West.
So. You have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are you opposed? Passes your question. All right, thank you so much for joining us today socially distinct. All right, this, I believe, leads us now to our item number fifteen, our adoption of a resolution for interlocal agreement on our animal control services. I do not see cheap frogs, which must be, that carried, as seen stock stamps, and will not be playing a role of our material issue.
That's right. I have no idea how to impersonate that. I don't have a gun.
How shiny are your shoes? Because really, that's how, that's how we know these people, the dishes are shiny.
Not that shiny, not that shiny. So I'll do that the next time. Interlocal agreement that we have before you is simply update to the fees. Davis County and the cities of Davis County work together to provide animal care services rather than each city or several cities having our own services. Total balance amount to balance was about $115,000. We could hope to provide animal care services for that now. So we're pleased with the contract, even though our portion has gone up. If you may remember, I would say four years ago, maybe, for those that were here, we entered into an interlocal agreement where the cities agreed to pay half of the operating costs and capital replacement costs for the facility. Pardon me. The county, and so we actually have a formula that dictates, that we all agreed to back then, what our rates would be. The formula is not changing, just the amount of dollars that we pay. For some reason, Davis County decided that it was important to make these updates by an interlocal agreement, even though really there, you already approved the process. So tonight, we're just simply asking you to update the interlocal agreement by amendment that we incorporate renewed charges for our pre-existing curable papers. And the funds are already refunded.
I'm just enjoying that we not only track, not by its own makes sense, but we also track hats.
Yeah.
It's like item number five right there. It does, it seems fair for them to must reuse stocks or hats. I don't know if Chris would agree with that, but they in there.
We'll change the points. The loser gets to leave.
All right, if any additional comments or questions regarding the interlocal for our animal care services? If not, we can just entertain the motion.
No, Madam Mayor, Tim, I'd like to adopt resolution twenty twenty dash four, which includes four, forty eighteen, how old will be cooperation, which is downtown city and Davis County.
Second, you have a second. So all the question, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Gary, you did a nice job of cheap frogs. Thank you. Your shoes, for fun. Okay, item number sixteen, consideration of the takeover agreement between downtown city and Reserve American. Insurance company petition, C-Hall, will modify it. For this item, we will actually turn it straight.
Thank you. As the council is aware, we have interpreted the contract with the contractor for the city hall remodel project as part of, as part of the original agreement. They were required to have the performance in the bottom case. We had made on the surety to perform under that, on under the contract. They had a number of ways in which they could do that. They elected to do that through what's called a takeover. What their plan is, is to take over the original contract documents along with this takeover agreement. You have it provided. They're in the process of continuing to what they call application agreements, which is tend to ratify all agreements with subcontractors, which I think is a danger of the original subcontractor on board. The D-50 ergories is a, most, not all of the subcontractors on board at this point. The next step in the process is simply to enter your C-Hall. So key things to be aware of here is that we are, this is based on Lloyd's estimation. He has asked for a substantial completion date. This is in paragraph seven, substantial completion date, seven, sorry, six.
You don't know, I don't know what we have what year we're planning.
Oh, you know, I emailed out a copy, I'm sorry, I should have printed copies as well. Well, let me just tell you. So originally, the original contract had contemplated that substantial completion date would be May twenty-fifth through June twenty-third, and the final completion date, sorry, final completion date, June twenty-third, June twenty-third. Lloyd has looked at it and has determined that it would be appropriate to give them a duration period in which we do not assess completed damages on substantial completion August first of twenty-twenty. With final completion of September first of twenty-twenty. Now, that number is likely not going to, that target is not going to happen with the estimations that they're currently giving us, the still quo, the viewing process. It is more like a substantial completion of beginning of November and final completion beginning of December. One of these different dates being is that if the city wishes to do so, based on this contract about when you start to assess the commitment, is it after September first? Which is a standard payment for a daily maintenance.
What is that rate?
I believe fifteen hundred. Fourteen hundred dollars a day. It's been a while since I looked at that one. That's one of the attachments to the contract there. Your bottom box, key track up here. Those are the key dates, and don't visit your, you're going to want to hear. It's a pre-standard contract as far as what happened to take over. Some of the council is also familiar with this process. It's the same process that they're going to do on the east side of Park. Lloyd and I have met with the new contractors a number of times. Lloyd, of course, will be with us. We've been in contact with them, we've been in contact with the surety, we've been in contact with the surety's attorney. We feel good about the direction we're headed, and we think that the team we're putting together is very motivated and very competent, and that they're going to see how the project runs as quickly as they can. So what I, what we're asking for today is we need to prove what the takeover agreement which basically says that don't take over all, except for the things we're proving to take over very quickly. We are seeing help. The one thing that we don't have, or that we're very, very close to having, and it's a very, very large document, is this manuscript of work. The reason why we don't have that yet is because our architect and Lloyd have come over that with a fine tooth comb to make sure that they're not missing the thing that has not been fitted, or something that's not fitted correctly, that it's fixed. So we're working through that. I'd say we're probably ninety-nine percent done, but not completely done there. I guess that's a huge document, it's very technical. But we haven't been able to get that done. What we need to do to stay over here, in place of giving, not need to give for all time, we need to get this through the table. What I would ask is, if the city council is so inclined to approve a takeover agreement, I would ask that you make the approval of the takeover agreement and then add the following to the motion. There are some numbers that need to be included, and I just got this from their attorney in five twenty-five today. Which is why we've been a chance to get that out, to do, yeah. There are some numbers that need to be included in the contract, probably in the contract balance paragraph. These are the following numbers. The original contract amount is seven million, one hundred thirty-four thousand, one hundred ten dollars. Remaining contingency is one hundred sixty thousand, two hundred nine hundred and seventy-nine cents. Due in home unit, three hundred nine thousand, five hundred fifty-three, and seventy-five cents. And the balance to finish, including the taintage, is three million, six hundred seventy-two thousand, two hundred three dollars, and twenty-six cents. Those, if you want more information on those numbers, either Lloyd or myself, we're happy to provide it to you. I can see that down the record, but that needs to be included in the contract as well, in the contract balance paragraph. And then finally, what we would ask is that you just offer us staff to complete the negotiations with regard to the scope of work within a row about the way our city engineer is signing all this, this very confidence to endorse the contract and move this further along. Lloyd's the desert mayor representative on the original contracts, which is why you're moving on the side. Any questions?
I have a final question. The contractors that had it on the job that had them paid, as with this takeover agreement, do they get paid? If they, if they don't continue, if they say not to keep on the job?
They're, 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 they're getting paid no matter what. That's their different problems. So we're dealing with, there's two different problems. Once the performance bond was a little bit more clear later, there's an aid bond with many contractors, and maybe there's. I think most, if not all of the subcontractors won't have them there. The total amount of the surety paid out at that point is over a million dollars to subcontractors. So they've, they've been, they've already been performing. And I believe they've all laid down, they have, like, they're going to sit and scroll through that process. Do you know what they've all done?
It's about four hundred thousand dollars.
Still four hundred dollars, but like I said, they've made a good passion. One point two million is void, so they're, they're moving.
And is that included materials? Are there any outstanding?
That would be a question for Lloyd.
That figure twenty-eight clue, whatever the jersey is, being delivered to the buyer. Some of the materials seem like. Yeah, equipment is seeing some comparing airhouse. So it is available to the project, it's just that it's here.
My other question was, so we continue with the same architect? Is that part of the agreement that the Zurich would not replace our architect in a different direction? Is contractor here, that is separate from contractor?
And I would just add on that subject, that the architect has been stellar throughout this whole process. He has been, his team, his team have worked very hard, have been looking out for our interests with the order. Continue with yourself, they're fantastic.
That's a special question. Do I have other questions, council?
Well, just thanks to the folks that have helped us protect our interests. I would say that this has consumed way too much of Lloyd's life. This is a, this is a great opportunity for us to get back to normal with regards to C-Hall and taking it up our place.
Well, sure, doctor, is that this is consumed far more.
Well, maybe you can also think of that in your very head.
I would like to say that I don't necessarily think that, I believe that the staff could decide if we want to put up with the damages. But it would be nice to use that as some sort of language, to make sure that we just get the building as it was possible. What, what I could tell the surety's attorney is that we need to eliminate damages caused by the building. We need to have something that can push them. But we're not interested in pushing a surety, we're not interested in pursuing the eliminated damages. What we are interested in is having our C-Hall as free as possible. I've already agreed that information to them, and we believe, based on the team that we've met and the discussions that we've had, and we're talking hours and hours of discussions, we think that we're at a great team place. We do think they're, um, it's worth looking at. Because I'm a broken record, just one more time I want to say, thanks for the process that we use. Stay with the process that we use. This shouldn't cause us something else over how we've selected contractors. Just stay with what we're doing, we're going to be okay. So, thank you for that. Yeah, we appreciate that comment. That's a concern that we had, and we already discussed it. We discussed it a little bit in council meetings, that we were concerned about whether it's something on our current process. But maybe because of this process, as you said, we don't think so. It's evident in dealing with the surety, we're dealing with a number of claims, that this one did kind of processes of cities, school districts, universities. We weren't the only ones that are missing home, that have the urgent processes that we lost on. It's a little bit bad enough. Thank you.
So I am confident that the other three here, council colleagues, will count faithfully all the numbers that they claimed. And if one people in motion did not, do we need to repeat?
You could decide with the numbers that were recited.
Thank you. So I was asking, you'd like to recite them?
No, they don't, just what I've said. I'd be happy to make a motion if you're ready.
Let me write that down.
I'd be happy to make a motion that we approve the takeover agreement with Reserve American for the eastern part of C-Hall, with all of those benchmark numbers that are excited for us. And then the authorization of staff to negotiate all exhibits and sign the documents.
Perfect. Totally.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor, please stand aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Pass the unanimous agreement to item seventeen of our meeting. Someone like to?
Madam Mayor, Coaten, we have to make a motion that we convene to a closed session to discuss the acquisition or sale of real property, discuss pending litigation, or to discuss the character and or competence of individual management.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that. And to just remind you that this is a roll call vote, so we'll start, I don't remember whose attorney it was, so we'll start with.
I go aye.
That's the other sentence. Aye. That's the number eight.
Aye.
That's the bar.
Aye.
That's two ayes.
Aye.
Hey, so for the public's information, we're going to, in private, to, in private session, as soon as we talk about this. You guys will have to reply, or it will be in our debate meeting, and it's not part of the closed session. That will, after we've been out of the closed session.
So with that, we will take just a few minutes so that we can leave that closed session and any of our guests can exit.
Well, we can adjourn to this room.
Yeah.
Okay.
So this is your opportunity for a.